I will go and visit some chicken coops, too.
I will.
No. I've talked to a lot of people that don't want them.
Yeah.
Right, right.
The October 6th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, which is generally the first and the third Tuesdays of each month, we allow Eden Prairie citizens, residents, to an opportunity to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Typically, that time is about 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers here. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, the phone number, and subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I will open up the floor to unscheduled speakers. This portion of the meeting is not televised nor recorded. Again, if you have any questions, please contact the city manager's office. We have a few items tonight under proclamations and presentations. The first is to accept the donation of a free little library for the outdoor center, and that will be presented to us, I think by Chloe Russo. Is she here?
Your Honor, Chloe isn't here tonight, but this little free library will actually go at the outdoor center. And if you've seen pictures of the other ones, the colors match really well, and it'll be a great place for some of the children's books and probably more nature-themed books. And it is something that Girl Scouts has previously donated. Chloe is a Girl Scout in the community who also has made one and will be installing it down at the Starling Lake Outdoor Center.
So this marks quite a few of those. How many do we have now?
This is number five.
Number five, great. As well as several I've seen in neighborhoods around the community.
Yeah, exactly. There's quite a few more around the city, but five that have been donated to the city, all placed in parks. Some of them are park-school locations.
Okay, thank you. Well, we appreciate that donation from Chloe Russo. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of a little free library from Girl Scout Chloe Russo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then a donation from the Eden Prairie High School Boys and Girls Swim Team. Mr. Rahm.
Yes, Your Honor, council members. This is part of the fundraising effort that took place. And if you go to the Aquatics Center and look at the block wall, the tile wall for recognition, you will see the Boys and Girls Swim Team acknowledged from the high school. I think it's important to point out, though, that these are contributions from the individual swimmers. So the kids on the team actually put this forward on behalf of their teams, wanting to make a mark and be a part of the fundraising effort. They, currently, the girls have had five swim meets at the facility, and the boys' season is yet to start, but they'll also have their meets there, too. So they feel really dedicated towards the facility as well as the other swimming groups that are using them. So a total of $500 raised amongst the youth swimmers.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from the Eden Prairie High School Girls and Boys Swim Teams toward the aquatics expansion project.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Chloe has arrived.
Oh, Chloe has arrived.
Chloe has arrived.
Okay. Hey, hi Chloe. It's nice to see you again, my pal Chloe. We just made a motion to accept your donation of a little free library for the outdoor center, and I bet there will be a lot of nature-related books that are put into that little free library. So thank you for that. Did it take you a lot of time?
Yeah. Me, my dad helped build, and then I painted.
Wait, your dad is a good painter, I hear.
Yeah. He has a painting company.
Right.
And then, so my dad kind of made it, and I helped paint it. And then I asked, like, my mom asked people at work to donate some books, and I asked a couple people in my class to donate some books. So it's kind of like a variety of, like, maybe like older or like younger for all ages.
So it's already full of books, huh?
Yeah, we have more book bags, but it's just like a couple in there.
Oh, that's great. It's beautiful. I love the shingles on the roof.
Mm, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chloe. We appreciate it. And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, we have a presentation by Hennepin County Commissioner Jan Callison. Jan, do you want to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, and council members and staff. I appreciate some time on your agenda each year I come. Presentation is probably a longer word than the speech itself, if you will, but I appreciate the time to talk with you about some county issues and hear what your issues might be. As you may know, the county provides social services on behalf of the state of Minnesota, and about 40% of our budget relates to health and human services. So I wanted to update you with what we're seeing in terms of demand for social services across the county, and then also have numbers for Eden Prairie. From 2010 to 2014, we saw an increase in clients by 41% across the county. This probably relates less to the economy than it does to demographic changes and to changes in state programs. And I'll give you a breakdown for Eden Prairie, and then I can comment more on that as well. So in Eden Prairie, we saw an increase of 58% during that four-year period. Cash assistance, you might think of that as welfare, down 24% in Eden Prairie. SNAP clients or food stamp clients, up 4%. Healthcare clients, up 60%. And that relates to Medicaid expansion. That relates to changes in programs in terms of who might be eligible for long-term care and the work the county does. So this is not necessarily that the economy is bad, it's just that programs have changed. You may see for next year, for example, that child protection standards have changed across the state, so we'll have more child protection cases. And I talk about this because it's such an important part of our budget. And as you listen to the proposed tax increase that we have for next year, 4.5%, part of the reason for that is because we're seeing more demands for social services across the county. So that's one factor that I would point to. I also would point to the fact that we're probably going to get less state revenue in some important areas. So even though, for example, we'll have more child protection cases, the state is not going to be paying for all those child protection cases. There are instances where they have split costs or pushed costs back to the county. The Anoka Mental Regional Treatment Center is one where we expect we'll pay about $4 million more next year because of the change in the cost share between the county and the state. So we're looking at a number of factors, as well as this is the point where we're negotiating our labor contracts for the next two years, and there'll be a cost of living adjustment. So we've had a number of years where our property tax increase has been fairly flat in Hennepin County. The average over the past four years has been 0.19% increase. But the administrative recommendation for next year is a 4.5% increase that was adopted by the board on a preliminary basis, and we'll now have until December to decide whether we're going to stay at that number or reduce it. We can't go higher, as you know. I looked at the values in Eden Prairie, and for a median-valued home in Eden Prairie, there'll probably be a smaller increase in 4.5% because of shifts in property values across the county and shifts between commercial and residential. So I thought that would be of help to you to understand that. As always, when I come, I want to thank you for your support on Southwest LRT. It's been another, I'll say tumultuous, year for Southwest LRT. Certainly, some hard decisions were made, and I know they affected Eden Prairie more than any other community. But it's still a really strong project, and it's moved forward because of the work that you've done, the work that your staff has done, and so I want to recognize that and thank you for that as well. The only other thing I would point out is that we have another round of youth sports applications due on November 2nd. We've changed the program a little bit, so it still does small capital equipment, if you will, still available for capital grants. And then we have broken out playgrounds into its own categories, so they're not competing with capital grants. So there's more money in that area. And for the first year next year, we're going to try a swimming pilot program. So we recognize that across Hennepin County, children of color have less access to swimming lessons, if you will. Certainly, the rates of drowning and incidents are higher for them. So we're not trying to create a new program in Hennepin County, but we do think there's money coming out of the sales tax of the ballpark, so we could augment some of the existing programs and expand access so that more children who are unrepresented would have access to swimming and those life safety skills. So we'll try that on a pilot basis, see how it works, and make a decision after a year as to whether or not it makes sense. So those are the items I brought with me. As always, I'm happy to take your questions, and again, I do appreciate, John, the time on your agenda and your support over the past year.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Callison?
I have one question about the youth sports scholarships. That was money from the Twins stadium?
Correct.
Is it a, like, a franchise fee that they're paying the county, and then the county is dispersing that in the form of grants? Or is there a limit to how?
It's the sales tax.
Okay, so is it forever, in perpetuity?
No. Until the bonds are repaid. So I think originally it was 30 years. There's been early payment, prepayment. So it's more like 20 or 25, is my guess. And by state statute, we can only use a certain amount for youth sports. We have to use a similar amount for libraries. And so we're able, we've been able to increase hours for libraries across Hennepin County, and then we have some that we use for youth sports. And it will go away when the bonds are paid off.
And what are we into that now? 10 years?
I would guess 10 years. I've been on the council, on the board, for seven years, and the ballpark was done before I was there, so probably about 10 years.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to add, delete, change? All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, September 15?
Move approval. Second.
Any items to question or correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held that same date, September 15?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval. Second.
Anything to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to the first of two public hearings, and it's regarding Burger King. Mr. Getchel.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have a site plan review consideration before the city council for the Burger King on Terry Pine Road. So there are two Burger Kings in Eden Prairie, so this is the Burger King that's located near Highway 5 and Eden Prairie Road or Highway 4. And the application calls for a number of improvements. Interior to Burger King, the exterior facade, the parking lot, the landscaping, and your packet has quite a bit of material related to all the improvements that are before you tonight on the 2.15 acres. But the applicant is here tonight to provide a presentation and overview of their proposed project, and then staff and the project proponent can answer any questions that you have prior to or after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Dahl, D-A-H-L. And what information would you like me to present other than an overview of the improvements to the site and the building? The basic improvements to the building will be Burger King prototype 2020 improvements. Let's call for new signage, new brick materials, new roofing materials, and the color scheme will be, the brick materials will be in whites and black tones, which are consistent with the 2020 branding colors. The interior is basically a remodel of the public areas, dining room, seating chairs, interior colors, finishes. The site plan improvements are minimal, other than resurfacing the parking lot area, restriping. The planning commission and city planning office has requested that we make some other improvements which help direct traffic to the drive-through lane, prevent left-hand turns in from the lane closest to the building. We've extended a curb out that prevents that access at that point. Directional wayfinding signs on-site on the property itself, on the pavement itself, I should say. And we've added a sidewalk connection from the public trail along County Road 4 into the site. And that's pretty much the synopsis of what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. When was the last time that there were improvements made to that particular site?
Unfortunately, the owner couldn't make it tonight, and I do not know. I believe it was probably in the 90s when the last improvements were made.
Oh, okay.
There were two additions to the building, and I'm not sure exactly when they were done.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about landscaping and the berm?
The existing berm along County Road 4, yes, that, right now, Hennepin County is working with the owner on eliminating, demolishing the existing retaining wall along the trail on County Road 4, which will reduce the height of the berm slightly to be a grade that can be mowed easily and safely.
So slightly like six inches or slightly like two feet, or do you have any idea?
It's in their hands. I believe it's going to be somewhere between six inches and 18 inches.
Okay. We've had those berms in the past to kind of create a visual separation between commercial and the street and to make it visually look better, so we don't look into sees of parked cars or whatever. If that berm comes down quite a bit, what are you planning to do in terms of landscaping to maintain that type of separation?
Yes, there's new landscaping proposed along that entire berm, red twig dogwoods, kyle forster, and daylilies along the berm and at the existing pylon sign.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Aho.
I just have a couple of questions. If this would be approved, when would you anticipate that the construction would start, and about how long do you think it would take?
They would like to start as soon as possible. They have their contractors bidding on it right now, but pending approval, they're ready to get started, I believe, next week, as early as next week. And it appears to be about a three-month project, so it should be completed in January.
Would the store remain open during the entire construction, or would they have to close it?
They would remain open. There'd be areas phased in in the dining room and as well as when there's work being done on the drive-through. So it's intended to be, remain open for as long as they are currently during the day, but there may be times when it would have to be, the drive-through would have to be closed down for some of the work that has to be done there.
Great, well, thank you. We're excited to see that you're looking to improve the facility and renovate it, so it'd be well timed.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Jeremiah, could you tell me, is the signage that's proposed or shown on this plan the exact same signage that they presently have?
No, I don't believe it is exactly the same. They are planning to replace it, but the signage is not being approved tonight. They have to come in for separate signage permits for that, so we haven't done a full review of the compatibility with our code on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Case.
This is actually more maybe for Janet, maybe for Rick. Partly curiosity, but also I'd like to know technically some changes. It sounds like the footprint of the building is staying exactly the same.
Yes.
It sounds like the paved impervious surface is staying exactly the same. So my curiosity is what crossed the line that brought, that made this have to come before the council? Like, they would have been able to do some facade work, I'm sure, without coming before. So I guess I'm really asking, what's new in terms of the developer's agreement from the original developer's agreement, and then the revised approvals whenever they were in the 90s? So what brought this before us tonight?
Major changes are to the exterior materials, both the roof, going to the metal roof, and the, you know, overall facade and look of it. There are some site changes as well with regard to landscaping. But we do approve both the site plan and the building elevations and materials, so it was considered, you know, pretty much a complete rehab of the site, and particularly the exterior of the building. So in this case, it did require the review. We are looking at perhaps creating a different category that would facilitate the process a little bit when they aren't doing any building additions. So that's something that's being considered in concert with the TOD ordinance, but we haven't gotten that fully approved yet.
So you took me down a path I was kind of going towards, and not so much for this, I'm glad this is before us tonight, and I think this does meet the requirement of whatever that is, even if it's squishy. But is it ultimately a judgment, is there case law that says once a certain percent of a building is altered? What is it that does cross a line that mandates, or is it ultimately a staff judgment that, you know, when you would bring something to the council or not?
Your Honor, Councilmember Case, right now, there aren't very detailed criteria with regard to, so you could interpret it that really any change needs to be brought through the process. So we would like to put more criteria into the code so that it is clear, and it doesn't just become a staff judgment of whether it's a significant change or not, which is kind of where we are today.
Sure. And then in this case, the significant change is even more meeting our code because of the 75% they're exceeding. So then I wonder again if a building simply decided to better them. We had a case just at the meeting for last with the strip mall there going out of town or by the old Wilson Learning Building, but, and I'm just always curious, what is it that mandates that we would have this brought before us? If somebody decided simply to update their exterior and do it even more, meeting our code, would that have to come before us? So I appreciate the fact that you're looking at maybe being clear in some kind of a policy, but I, again, appreciate this coming before us tonight.
Mr. Russell.
I would add, sorry, I would add that in addition, the code literally requires that no building permit for the construction of an alteration of a building can occur without a site plan review. And a number of the measures or matters that Ms. Jeremiah's department looks at are identified in the code. Not all of them apply to an alteration, but some do. One of them in particular, compatibility of materials, textures, colors, and other construction details. And when a new development comes before you, you spend time looking at the facade, whether you like the facade, the color palette. Often, you know, I don't see it so often in Ms. Quima's office, but Mr. Franzen always had the color palettes lining his wall. Those were things that he brought to you. So those are matters that you are given to make decisions on, and not that you need to, but it's what you're required to do under the current code.
There's still some subjectivity to the word alteration, I would think.
Yes, yes, there is. And so there were, in the past, minor matters that the city planner would, sometimes if he would make without any consultation, other times he'd bounce it off of me in particular to say, here's my sense of it. Do you think we need to go to the council with this? I think it's a minor amendment, and there's room in the code for me to allow minor amendments. And I think Ms. Jeremiah was probably the first sounding board for that, from Mr. Franzen. And then if there was even some more question, then it got to me.
And I trust totally the process the way it's been. I just want to get a better understanding of it, especially as we're going forward, because these last two cases have been interesting to me, just to think through why, I understand why they came here, but what would be if they were slightly less alterations, what would that look like? So it sounds like you're having those conversations internally as well, and this is all good. I won't take more time tonight. I just wanted to understand more about this project tonight.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions for you, Mr. Dahl, so you can be seated if you like.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this Burger King alteration?
Saying none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for site plan review on 1.34 acres.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The second public hearing is at Eden Prairie Retail. Mr. Getchel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is a request for a plan unit development concept review and district review with waivers and a zoning district amendment within the Commercial Regional Services District on .8 acres, along with a site plan review. This project proposed is for the construction of a new 7,200-square-foot building. The location is the former Famous Daves, if you may recall, near the mall on Flying Cloud Drive. The proposed structure to take its place is a two-tenant retail building, and as I said, the proposal recommends the removal of the existing structure in the drive-through and replacing it with this new structure. The proponent is seeking two waivers, one from the front yard setback and a very, very small waiver from the floor area ratio for the site. The structure greatly exceeds or exceeds our requirements for construction materials on all facades, landscaping, parking, and does include the addition of bike racks. The architecture of the building includes varied roof lines, building wall articulations, and in addition, the proposal includes the use of canopies and wall lighting to create additional definition, contrast, and interest in the building. The Plan Commission recommended approval of this project at their September 14th meeting, had a number of suggestions, which are also included in the packet and which the project proponent followed up on. The proponent is here tonight to provide a little bit more of an overview, if necessary, but also to answer any questions that you may have, as well as staff.
Okay, thank you. You gentlemen, the proponents, thank you.
Good evening. This is Mayor and the Council. Yes, Sheldon Berg with DJR Architecture. I was the architect on the project, and I'd be happy to walk through, give you a quick overview if you'd like. Let me just.
Yes, you can use, there's a camera.
All right, as was described in the sort of preamble to this, we are looking to redevelop the site of the former Famous Daves with a 7,200-square-foot retail building with two tenants. The existing building, which basically sits in this location, will be removed in this, the newer building here.
Can you slide that up?
Oh.
I think it's actually down there. Yes, thank you.
Very good, thank you. So the addition here largely is on the north side of the building and in the location, or part of the location where the existing drive-through is located. In addition to the building, there is some additional parking that is being incorporated and that, you know, to accommodate the additional area in the building, as well as a number of stormwater improvements, and a retaining wall along the west side, just off of Flying Cloud Drive, which enables us to incorporate the stormwater system here. There's currently not much of a stormwater system on the current site. In addition to those items, the landscaping on-site is being supplemented quite a bit. There's currently just one tree over here, maybe two in the corner. I think it's just one tree. And then there's basically a grass slope that slopes up from the trail and from the street. With the inclusion of the retaining wall, we have added quite a bit of shade and understory trees, ornamental trees, along the retaining wall to soften that, also to add some better presence to the, and screening to the parking that projects that direction. And as was stated earlier, we have incorporated some bike parking. And as was stated earlier, we have incorporated some bike parking, as well as landscaping in the east side of the property that abuts some additional retail uses. The building itself is presented with some forced... I'll call it foresighted architecture, because there really is in the back... I mean, the building itself is sort of in the middle of a larger retail development, so you have good views of all sides. So, we've treated it that way, adding articulation, changes in materials, and changes to the roofline to make... To not only add some character to the entries, but also to give some transparency to the building, so that you're not just looking at blank walls, say, on the... Maybe the north or other sides are less visible, which obviously benefits the community in terms of being something that's a little more pedestrian-friendly as you're walking or driving along that route, as well as for the tenants to provide another opportunity to showcase their wares, let's just say. I think that concludes the presentation, so I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho.
Is this project being proposed for tenants that you already have lined up?
They are.
Okay.
We have leases with two tenants.
Okay, so is this intended to be... Can you say in terms of retail, is it intended to be food or is it...
No, the non-food-related uses.
Non-food-related, okay.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Wexstrom.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, too. The retail companies, businesses that you hope to have there, what are the hours of operation?
I think they would follow, you know, the typical hours that other retailers are using the area, probably sort of a nine to eight scenario, whatever's allowed with the overlay of uses for the area.
The reason I ask is that I'm very familiar with this area, and at certain times of the day, it is incredibly busy. The in and out of the ring road that goes around the mall is confusing. Lots of... There's just a lot of traffic at certain times of the day in that area. So, I've been kind of concerned about, you know, what the use would be, when the operation would be. So, I was delighted to hear that it was retail, not so busy at 7:00 a.m., which, trust me, I'm there. So, it's a lot going on. There's a coffee shop, there's a McDonald's. So, I've been worried about that. I wonder maybe even the staff could speak to that.
Your Honor, Councilmember Sherri Butcher-Wextrom. I would say that the peaks on this use would not be a big concern. I think a lot of the peaks have to do with the restaurant and food service types of uses in the area, and that this might be something that people would add to their trip if they happen to be in that area, but they probably wouldn't peak generally at the same time, in my experience. It's more of a service and a traditional retail, from what I'm hearing, with regard to the tenants, rather than food service or restaurant.
So, more like a destination, so you know at a certain time of day, you're going to go there, and you're going to try to avoid all the crazy traffic that there might be in that area.
I would think generally, unless you happen to already be in that area, so then you might combine trips. But I wouldn't expect it to add, you know, very many trips to the busiest time. It just doesn't look like it would peak at the same time, from my experience.
Okay.
Perhaps the applicant wants to speak to that a little as well.
Okay. Councilmember Case.
So, this... Janet, may go to you, and may go to Rick. Kind of getting back to my former questioning, that if a restaurant business, after the retail hopefully works a while but didn't work, came in and did not change the exterior, would they be a permitted use here?
They are permitted in this district, but my understanding is that we are approving this for the retail service use, and we would look at the parking differently and other requirements with regard to the restaurant. I think it would be highly unlikely that they, you know, wouldn't need major changes to make that work, obviously, commercial kitchen and the like, but...
Well, that's partly my concern, that if they could take over this entire building again, the two sides, the parking would become problematic, because there is no extra proof of parking that I can see. So, you're saying that it would automatically kick in a review?
My understanding is that it would, so that we would have a chance to take a look at the parking, et cetera.
Mr. Russell.
Mr. Russell.
I agree entirely with Ms. Jeremiah. The PUD incorporates the development agreement as part of the ordinance itself, and so the PUD gets very specific as to what's being allowed. So, any... Similar to the discussion we just had about what caused something to come back here, that would require it to come back. And having heard the conversation, there'll be some sensitivity to that issue with respect to the specific paragraphs that go into the development agreement that are crafted for each individual development. There's stock paragraphs regarding a variety of issues that go into every development agreement, and then council conditions, planning commission considerations that the council agrees with. Those are reflected as individual paragraphs within the development agreement, and so I imagine we would also, upon council direction, include that in the development agreement as well.
Okay.
Just one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Different topic, stormwater. So, on a project like this, where the stormwater was already, I'm assuming, handled formerly in some larger PUD concept, are they... Is the new developer responsible, then, to deal with the stormwater that's created off this piece of property? And obviously, they can't store it on site, so then, do they contribute to a fund, then, and then we use that? I mean, just talk about how that works, how they deal with their stormwater.
Yes, Councilmember Case, in a situation where they'd be adding new impervious, there are certain triggers, depending on how much new runoff that they would be creating. They'd be required to do infiltration on site, also removal of pollutants like total phosphorus, total suspended solids. For an existing property where they're not expanding it beyond a certain ratio, they're not required to put additional stormwater treatment, infrastructure in place. We have talked about specifically in this town center, major center area, creating a bank for doing total phosphorus removal, that if you couldn't do on-site your treatment of your total phosphorus, total suspended solid, might be able to do that somewhere within the basin adjacent to the property and allow for a banking of that. Now, we haven't established that yet, but it's something that we've talked about with our partners at the watershed district.
If a tenant came into this building that was a commercial use, retail, but like hair salon, that had, you know, 10 sinks or something, that tenant would deal with its sack and whack, and that part of water, that would not be part of the developer? Would that, at that point, be part of a tenant's agreement?
That would be probably handled through any type of a building permit. So, if there was a need to do a remodel, there would be a calculation of the whack and sack fees, and that would be paid at the time of the building permit.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this property? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make it if I can find it. It's a long one, it looks like. Make sure I'm on the right one. I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on .8 acres. Am I on the correct one?
Yes, you are.
For confirmation here, because I don't want to get through the whole thing.
[laughing]
All right. Approve first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district amendment within the Commercial Regional Services zoning district on .8 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and any additional council conditions.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And Mr. Berg, I think it's a beautiful building. It's going to be a nice addition to the community. Thank you. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval of the payment of claims as submitted?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, or any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wextrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lookins.
Aye.
Well, it looks like we have a short agenda for tonight, unless there's anything you want to bring up.
We've got a lot of high school kids here. I think we probably ought to extend this a little. Can we talk about...
As long as you can. A little hissing in the eye.
You all are lucking out on a very precise, efficient, short meeting. And that's government for you.
Anything else? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Woo-hoo.